...in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating justice for all.
One more.
Form, order, take motion for approval of the minutes.
I'll motion to approve the general minutes. I'll second it.
Okay. All those in there say aye.
Aye.
Both same time.
Rich?
Morning. Last Friday, we got our quotes in for a rock run. And we had, uh, had some pretty decent numbers. Looks like BMC took District One at thirteen ninety-five a ton and then FOG took all the other districts. Thirteen ninety-eight a ton, thirteen thirty-three a ton, thirteen twenty-four a ton, thirteen forty-nine a ton. Estimated cost for the rock run is looking at five hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars, give or take, depending how much rock they get down. So, um, they're aware of what they've got going on. So I don't know when they plan on starting the rock run, but just an update there. And then I've got a couple of professional services agreements for the next round of bridges that we, uh, need to start looking to get replaced. The, uh, the BART, let me see, this one is Brookfield Thirty over John Coyle. This one is, uh, this is for design and bid, engineering services. This one's, this marshy down there and it's gonna take a little bit of work. I think this is a lump sum fee, this is a lump sum fee of thirty-nine thousand, five hundred, to do this. Professional services agreement, um, it'll be for final design. I think they've got the preliminary stuff done already. So I've got that one for approval to get that one, get to moving.
Motion.
I'll motion to approve Brookfield Thirty agreement for the bridge. I'll second it.
Move in a second. Further discussion, all those in there say aye.
Aye.
Both same time. Motion will carry. Are you signed by Worth County here, Rich?
Uh...
You signed with me.
You, you signed. The next one is for Barton Twenty-One. This is gonna be preliminary design. They've got a lump sum fee for the base services, thirty thousand. And depending on what alternate to do, whether it's a box covert or a bridge, those fees will, will change. If it's a box covert, it's an eighteen thousand dollar fee. And if it's a bridge, it'll be another twenty-seven thousand. I kinda think they can probably get a box covert to fit in that one. So this is another, another agreement to get moving on.
Motion.
I'll make a motion to Barton Twenty-One. Sorry. I'll second.
Good. In a second. No further discussion. All those in there say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same time. Motion will carry.
And we still have a pre-con for our paving yet with Eulons. So I don't know if they plan on doing that. That's had two mile stretch yet. So I'm not quite sure what the schedule's like for that, but, um... Lading wise, we got some moisture now, so hopefully some stuff moved around and get it packed back in, so. I've got for you tonight.
Yeah. Does he got anything else?
I don't.
Good. Drainage. Just drainage?
As far as I know.
Okay. Yeah, some tree brush, some of the spraying stuff, I think she said. So, take a motion to approve the drainage claims.
I'll make a motion to approve the drainage claims. I'll second.
Good. In a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in there say aye.
Aye.
Both same time. Motion will carry. We shouldn't have any work orders today.
You got the claims list?
Yep. I did check with Jason. I'm at, uh, water tower painting one. Um, he got some, uh, stuff from them. We're still gonna climate and look at it, but he said go ahead and pay that bill, so. So I would, motion to approve the, uh...
Pending?
Pending claims.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Move in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in there say aye.
Aye.
Both same time. Motion will carry. Any reports? Reports. Payroll eligibility.
Conservation.
Conservation.
Yep, sorry, naturalist.
Okay. All right.
Bowman?
Bowman.
Good for you.
Take a motion to approve the payroll eligibility verification.
I'll make that a motion. I'll second it.
Move in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in there say aye.
Aye.
Both same time. Motion will carry. Okay. Uh, any liquor or cigarettes today?
Stock tank.
Oh, stock tank, wrong again?
Yeah. Must be wedding season.
Yes, wedding season.
Motion to approve these stock tanks liquor licenses?
In a second.
I'll second it.
Good. Move in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in there say aye.
Aye.
Both same time. Motion will carry. Yeah, they're going strong down by me, I know that, so. All right. Employee handbook update. Discussion on the food delivery fee reimbursement for and public purpose.
So basically, that's one that just popped up. We, I don't think we've seen it before, that they got charged a delivery fee when they ordered food at a conference. And, um, we just wanna know if we need to include it as something that's reimbursable or if there is a public purpose for that or not. So that's up to you guys.
Did you ever hear back from the, like, the other counties? Cause it sounded to me like Elizabeth has a lot of counties looking at this right now.
I have no clue.
It'd be nice to know what they do.
Send her a message. Find out.
And you saw their, you guys saw the email response from Shanna?
Yes.
The two people eating supper had a pizza delivered. Instead of paying, we could've paid up to thirty-five dollars twice. We didn't. I don't see a problem with it personally. But if it's something that needs to be addressed, if we wanna get more info in the future for the handbook, then that's our example.
Well, since we're going through it, it'd be nice just to get it slid in.
Get it added in there. It's kind of a...
Yeah, I'm down the middle of the stream, I don't think. But I would like to know what other counties are doing. I'd kinda follow suit with what they're doing. The majority of them, but I don't...
I mean, I guess as long as, you know, especially if that meal's not included in the conference, that's the thing. If there's a meal included in the conference, I think you'll be able to couple in that, but...
Well, that was, that must've been an overnight.
Yeah.
Overnight, so they ordered in, worked, did whatever. So to me, I mean, like I said, we could've, they could've went out, they could've both spent their max.
Correct.
County could've paid it. There was some, there was some savings by doing this, so.
I just don't know if it's a county or it's public purpose or not. They get so picky on that stuff. So...
Um, I guess as long as you get it in the handbook.
Exactly.
It's not, it's not abused. I think people, to the best of ability, if they don't abuse it, too.
Cause they still have the max of thirty-eight bucks, so.
The max for...
And they're still below that.
Right, yep.
Do you need a motion to allow that? I'll motion to allow that cost.
And enter in the handbook.
And then you can enter in the handbook.
Okay, just a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, move in a second. Any further discussion? All those in there say aye.
Aye.
Both same time. Motion will carry.
I have one other thing.
Yep.
It was brought to our attention about comp time. When you go to, like, a conference in Des Moines and you don't get back till, like, five, six o'clock, some, we need to do the same, cause my understanding, some departments, you got the same email I did. Some departments are giving them comp time there.
Is it, is there anything in the handbook now for that?
I'd have to ask Theresa.
Does it need to be in there?
I don't know. That was my question.
Well, I didn't get the email, so I don't...
Comp times, comp time, I guess, but...
It's overtime. If, if their job required the overtime, they take it as comp, then that's what it is, right?
I kinda leave it up to... We've been doing, it's kinda been left up to the department, Ed. And that's where I'd leave it, but I, depends on whether you wanna do everybody the same or not.
Well, I would sure think elected official wise, it should be the same. And, you know, so unfortunately, it's different when you got your own board, unfortunately. Shouldn't be, but it is.
Like I said, if their job, if they work over because of their job, it's overtime or comp time. So to me, it's, should be...
That's kind of where I'm at today.
Yeah. You're either, you can pay them in overtime or just allow them to have comp time, so they take time off at a different date.
It's their choice.
I would, I would...
I guess.
Yeah. I would say so it'd be...
It's preferably comp time.
I mean, that's what I was told earlier the other day at another meeting. We had sign training and it took travel time and they got done later and the guys had to travel home. And it was after normal working hours. They had to leave early to get there on time, they had to get back.
And they can take either, right? They can take it on their check as overtime or take comp time, right?
Yep, let's just make sure all the departments know about it, so we do it all the same.
True. See, I think it's kind of in the handbook now, it's just...
Better read it.
Yeah.
And also, do we need to do, like, a final approval on an update for the handbook then?
We will, at some point. Yeah, I think there's still some corrections being made, so.
Um, I'm shooting over before end of year, so we're ready for July one.
Right, that's good. Okay, FY twenty-five budget amendment. That's a nine, right? Okay. I use it nine, next at nine-thirty. Anything on building in grounds, duck cleaning, or it was duckworks estimate. We sent that out, didn't we?
Scheduled yet?
Yeah, you all got a copy of that?
Yeah, I did.
I'd say schedule it, get it done.
That's what I'd say. General maintenance.
That's a motion, huh?
That's a motion. Schedule it, get it cleaned.
Just a second.
And you're good with the UV lighting installation? So am I. I'll second that.
Good. Move in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in there say aye.
Aye.
Both same time. Motion will carry.
I did talk to Springer about the tile, but we're not gonna do anything there until... Did you get ahold of Midwest?
I got a call in to him, so if they show up and...
What's that?
There's a roof leak in here.
Well, that's what we're questioning, that we think it is. But he said during that last rain, when I talked to him last week, we had, like, two days there where it really came.
Yep.
He said they didn't see any new stuff. So, but yeah, we, they thought... I didn't realize, I didn't realize there was heat tape along the edge of the building. Did you know that?
Yeah, I think, alright.
I even mentioned, I'd forgotten about it, but I heard that mentioned.
I mean, I know there's heat tape in certain places, I guess, on the...
Public health stuff.
It's keep from, the ice from driving up underneath.
Right.
So, that needs to get, anyway, when that, we make sure it's not leaking. I did talk to Springer and he came in and looked at it and talked to Jake about it.
True.
And will get us a bit on that. And, uh, I did, and other than that, I got ahold of Larson's and they put it on the agenda to fix those exhaust vents on the furnaces for public health.
Yep.
I don't know whether they got them done or not yet.
Okay. Yeah. She hasn't said, anyway, so I assume it's on their list.
It's on their list.
So, that takes care of all the maintenance issues for right now?
Yep.
Good. Right, uh, Melissa?
She's not with us today.
I always thought you said she could be, huh?
Something like she had something else going on here. She thought the meeting was on Monday.
Okay.
Oh, she forgot it was a Tuesday meeting.
It's a little confusing the way she worded it, but she said, yeah, there was, uh, she had, uh... Said tomorrow they got a housing conference meet, meeting to recap, see if they wanna do it again next year. And then Friday she'll be at an industrial committee meeting, so.
How's the cap thing went well, but they're gonna, they're gonna talk about them every two or three years.
Okay.
Just to try to keep... Cause it's, it takes a lot of work, a lot of people, a lot of time to do it, but they did, they did have great turnout.
Okay.
Hope things develop from that, so.
Anything on waste, water and wastewater? Well, today, department had discussion. Anything from department heads?
They're working on their building, so.
Well, that's good.
They're, are they actually working on it? They are actually working on it. They, they're starting, they, even though they had the green light, they didn't start for quite a while.
Oh.
So they were delayed on that, but...
Okay.
Yep, they are working. And Jason's been checking on them, so.
Good.
There's a request from, I don't know if it's near county, we must've got, the contractor doing yours, had gotten another, uh, bid and they wanted to come look. He thought they were doing our building, but he wanted to come look at it, and I don't know. If anybody's contacted you to come take a peek? Nobody's contacted for us, but, you know, ours, I don't know that it would be... I don't know either. Because... They're just... And they're essentially a general, it's, it's sub doing almost everything, okay?
Right.
Which, if they want them looked, they could, I'd be glad to let them look. Well, I just told them it wasn't, it wasn't the engineer's building, anything like that. It was a renovation of yours, so. Well, if somebody contacts you or...
Okay. Any supervisor comments right now?
I had an EMA meeting and we decided to go ahead with that volunteer program. We have no idea how many we're gonna give, but it's a dollar a year.
Okay.
So...
More dollar checks that won't get cashed?
It's, it's the hoops you gotta jump through.
Re, wreak havoc on the, the bank registry, huh?
It is, it costs more to write the thing.
Time and effort, yeah, probably does.
And then we have to write it again if they lose it and, yeah, it's fun.
It's the only way to do it. And we decided that it was a good deal. You know, we can rely on the outside counties, but...
Right.
There's always that chance that you might, you know, to have a few, like, two or three guys on board, so.
We can be right in the, in the middle of a disaster with another county.
Yeah, especially if we get, especially if we can get Joel that runs the drone.
Yeah, uh, next week's agenda items? I'm gonna see how they... Or member queries. Looks like they're fair on there and we got, got stuff on there, so we're good there. All right. Uh, nothing else right now, I will just recess the meeting till nine o'clock. You know, you're gonna make my father mine, let's get a weather station. He just said he, he, Marx is the one that... First, first item is FY twenty-five budget amendment, resolution twenty-twenty-five-seventeen, amend fiscal year twenty...
Yeah, open the public hearing. Open the public hearing.
Okay, it doesn't say that, does it?
Yeah, it does.
Does it?
Well, I mean...
I'll make a motion open the public hearing.
Okay. Just a second.
I'll second.
Okay, move in second. Roll call, Bob, Lober.
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
Smithy? Aye. The, uh, public hearing is open.
Hey, you guys got the changes?
Yes.
Um, I can run through them. Um, county sheriff is because of a, um, WCDA grant. The seven hundred thousand dollars is what I'm estimating we'll need to, um, make the capital fund positive by the end of the year through what is getting spent right now. Uh, and we're gonna take that out of the Highway one oh five for now.
Okay.
And then pay it back again. Cause I already paid back the last one for four hundred and fifty or whatever that one was. Um, we had another round of civil service, so I figured I'd just put a little more in there. Um, treasurer, that was some interest that we had to jockey around. Um, it's nothing, no new money or anything, we just had to put it in the right account. And we needed a budget amendment to do it. Um, sheriff, that's still the, um, project. And the engineering, the part land, I, for some reason, I don't end up putting the right amount of fiscal agent fees, so I put some more in for that. Um, medical examiner, I'm not sure on, but, um, I am, just put some more in just in case, cause we've had some more debts in the county.
So is it a guess anyways?
Pretty much. So if we don't use it, good. Um, and then... We had some drainage. And, um, some assessments that we had to, um, straighten out for, since the beginning of when we started on Tyler, on drainage. Val's got it priced narrow down to fourteen hundred and ninety-six bucks and we have to get that straightened out, so we're all balanced again.
All right. Is there any comments from the public? Let's see more times. Is there any comment from the public? Okay, hearing none. Took a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, move in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, again, roll call, Bob, Lober.
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
Smithy? Aye. Public hearing is closed. Now I will take a motion to approve the amended fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five Worth County project, resolution twenty, twenty-five, seven, dash seventeen.
Motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-five-seventeen.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, move in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call, Bob, Lober.
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
Smithy? Aye. Resolution will pass. Okay. Heidi?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Heidi Cole with Northland Securities.
It's good to see you guys.
Good to see you.
Yes. Well, today I just wanted to update the board. Um, as, you know, the county's been working on, um, just about a year ago, you went through the proceedings to borrow up to six million dollars for all of your building project updates, went through those hearings, um, kind of started some of that preliminary work to, um, to get those cost estimates to go in. There's been a little bit of internal loans and wanted to kind of give you an update, um, on the TIP cash flow, where it's at, um, as that, the newest wind farm is starting to come online now, um, and where we're at from, um, the TIP revenue standpoint and with the debt that's outstanding. Um, to kind of, uh, give you just that update is, is, you know, everything you did prior to the twenty-twenty-two bond was paid off early, um, and then you just have that five point seven million, uh, debt outstanding. So you just have that one outstanding and as we have, you know, the two wind farms and this third one coming in, um, that revenue is coming in pretty quickly, um, as, yeah, as Jackie's nodding. Um, we've got three, you know, when we've got three wind farm TIP revenues, I wanted to kind of give you that update. Um, starting from left to right, I'm gonna look at that black bar in the middle that just shows, um, right above it is the fiscal year we're currently in, and then right below it is the next year that we're looking at. Um, those, that estimated, um, taxes coming in for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, um, is two point seven million as we have that first five percent. Um, and then it's jumping up to two point nine million for twenty-twenty-six as that five percent starts coming on for that third wind farm. Um, just with that five point seven million outstanding with principal and interest, um, I have all of those debts there. You'll see the twenty-twenty-two A. Um, we're just making about an eight hundred and sixty thousand dollar payment each year. So that TIP fund is growing, um, each year. And looking at by the end of this fiscal year twenty-twenty-six, we've done some internal debt, but, um, it's looking like that, those revenues are going to start exceeding that five point seven million that's outstanding. So, um, you know, not sure where we're at with, um, you know, moving forward with some of those projects, but we'll have to, uh, if we're wanting to kind of keep up with the TIP revenue in order to take it all, um, needing to kind of deuce, um, some additional debt by December one of this year, um, to get that certified for fiscal year twenty-twenty-seven.
And we still have two point five million of the five point seven. So we need to spend that down first before we wanna get into something else.
Right, when we did that debt, it was, well, come up with some estimates.
Yeah.
Well, our estimates, the, the actual estimates were good. It's just that, once we did, got it in design, you could efficiently put these structures in a little, a lot cheaper. And so we've saved a lot of money and by not putting in what we had thought we would need. And so there's gonna be a, a balance in there, you know, the projects that we've stated that we're gonna do.
Do you know how soon you're gonna know?
Well, I know right now, I'm looking at...
And you've finished everything on your list?
No, these are things we gotta finish on the list. I probably got about, maybe seven hundred thousand dollars to finish the bridge list that we put in. But that's still gonna leave a one point eight million dollar balance, cause we didn't do a lot of, we didn't need to put a lot of box culverts in when we thought we would. We were able to design them and then install them in-house versus getting a contractor. So we saved a lot of money. The, the question is, can we allocate that, that to other transportation projects or not? Or we have to probably have a, a hearing and things like that, would you or not?
Um, you can go to the next urban renewal plan amendment. But if you wanted to do new projects, you'd have to add them into the plan.
Yeah. You just have to get added into the urban rule plan where we add each of the individual projects that you're working on, so...
Well, I was thinking, we've, we've got the BMC road that we're gonna pay with local dollars this fiscal twenty-six that we could maybe carry over some of that into that project. Or we could, if we're talking about airport block, that, we don't have that programmed yet, so we're gonna have to do an amendment, but we do have that project down there in, in the program already, so.
And you probably should get enough in, built into it to make it worth your while.
Well, I know that if we have the one point six, I know, I know we've got a pretty good estimate of what's gonna cost there and what we have remaining would take all of that at least. So, and we would still have some of our local dollars out of the secondary road fund to use to balance it out at the end. But I don't know what that takes to, to add that. You know, we've got projects coming up later on. We want, we keep talking about one oh five. Um, we have Witherwood Road coming up in, in a few years. There's a lot of miscellaneous little things out there that we could add to that. But I think the bridges are what's really gonna, the, the, the smaller, what we call them, the short bridges and stuff, they, they came in a lot, we're looking at doing them a lot cheaper than we thought we would, just based on, when we got the TIP dollars, we were rushing to put, just throw some numbers out there, see what's gonna cost. So I, I estimated what the worst case scenario was and it ended up being pretty efficient with what we had, so. We'll have a balance there.
I know we've got, so the six million we've approved, that we just haven't borrowed it yet, right?
But we've already borrowed, we just, we're gonna borrow seven hundred this year and we borrowed four fifty last year, so that's already...
One point one.
One point four.
Or could some of that balance in this one period go over to the other one?
Yeah, we end up putting back later.
Yeah.
Right.
So you're doing some internal, some internal debt, um...
But it's still spent.
Yep.
Can, can some of that other balance, I know it's in a different fund, Jackie, I know, but I didn't know if some of that remaining out of this could go towards the building, cause we don't really know exactly what we're getting into. We get the final bids on secondary roads, conservation building in the shop, too. Is that six million we borrowed for those projects enough? If we have left over here, is it something that could be transferred to the other or not? I don't know how that works.
That, I think you just need to start on the next, I mean, get a big chunk of stuff and start on the next urban renewal plan, cause it sounds like we can go from one to the other, but...
It's just gotta be in our plan.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be...
We can go back to the other one, but we still need to get stuff in the urban renewal plan.
And there's no point in borrowing money until we're ready, which with the buildings, we'll be ready pretty soon, so...
Well, the other thought is, you know...
And will we end up spending more on those buildings or not? I, I don't know.
You know, because in our, in our... You know, because in our, in our plan right now, we still have talked about salt sheds and cold storage, which we did a budget for, but if we have something, can we put that in the plan and maybe build that stuff too while we've got it? I mean. There's no shortage of where we can spend it. We've got the need. It's a matter of getting it spent out.
We just need to get it in the urban renewal.
But I'd make a big, I mean, I'd make a bigger chunk at it, because we still have, I gotta get a spreadsheet together, because we still have twenty million dollars hanging for this facility or whatever else. So I mean, there's already stuff in the plan that hasn't been done.
Pipeline too, is there still some hanging?
Yeah.
If we just, if we would need to use that as a guarantee, but it doesn't.
Doesn't look like it.
If it is, it's gonna be out quite a ways yet. So I don't know if it's gonna happen.
So yeah, we just need to talk about plan and get another urban renewal going probably and get a loan going when we can for because when, when are we gonna bid on the new buildings?
They wanna do that.
Because that's gonna be.
I think they wanna, they wanna do it by June.
Yeah.
And then hopefully we.
This month.
Two weeks.
Or this next.
This June, you know, and then they wanna maybe, hopefully we got construction going in the fall to where they can do inside work through the winter, but.
So then we'll know what that costs and we'll be able to move forward with debt.
Yeah. Because yeah, Jason's just hoping to get it out this, hopefully the next week or two.
We've got the comments back for that.
And then get that bid, so we'd have bid numbers on that. On that stuff, on those two buildings. So then we can move forward, borrow even that money and if we wanna do that urban renewal amendment.
Is the camp, is the new campground inlet urban renewal program right now? I know you had talked about.
The development is, but not.
But not the campground.
Not the.
Not the campground really.
Okay.
I thought that was supposed to be taken care of by the five or fifty thou, or five hundred thousand.
It was, and then AJ said, we just talked and said that he thought that if we had overrun for.
We don't know where that's at either. That's just a estimate too. So we're kinda, just as a safety thing, if we needed an extra little bit that we could.
Since it's gonna have to all be concrete and, you know, built to the standard of the terrestrial development site, it'll be probably more costly to be up front.
And that could be thrown into the next urban renewal.
Right, just, just in case.
I just, I gotta backtrack and see where we're at on those things. We've done so many of them that I need a spreadsheet.
Yeah, I think if we just kinda, you know, we're getting some of the cost of the buildings here. If we have just work session of, hey, here's, you know, additional roads, maybe um and it sounds like some campground and maybe some additional building maybe needs to be added in, if we can get it all on the list, cross-check it against what we currently have in the plan, and we'll kind of start doing that, those proceedings at the same time. Uh we're doing borrowing um for the building as well. So things will kind of start moving here in the next month or two.
Yeah, at least we have a better idea on that six million that we're ready to go with.
Ready to go with, yeah. But today really just wanted to kind of just, just get in front of you and start talking again as this stuff's gonna, gonna get moving and uh um wanna make sure that we have the debt outstanding so you can continue to collect, um so you don't kind of get behind on that.
Yes. So, put some stuff together.
In your free time.
In the urban renewal plan, if we have a project we wanna do and we stick it in there, and then we just never get to it, as long as it's there, we're good, right?
Right. So if it's in the urban renewal plan, it's, you are not required.
You're not required to use it.
But it's in the.
There, it's in the plan. It's got us covered.
You're covered. You could use it, you know, if.
If it was ten years now.
Down road.
You know. Even with the hundred and five project in it, you know, that's coming up down the road, it's there.
That's why you should do more versus less, because then you have to pay the fees all over again when you do another one.
And then once you've got it in there, you can probably prioritize maybe a little bit more too. If we got a forecast and we see where the money's at.
Yep.
Because priorities change and things like that, but it's always best to.
Sooner or later, that's gonna have to get done.
You know, next, in the, in the next three to five years, here's, here's kind of the list of the projects we're expecting um to get in here. And you do have to throw um estimated numbers on, on them. So um always just put slight.
The paving numbers are easy to estimate. When you start looking at bridges, we gotta get a more finite design and you're like, yeah. We can go here or we can go here and we'll, I always try to choose a more cost-effective measure than, than putting a Taj Mahal out there when we don't need one, but you just never know when you start doing final design, what, what you need to put in that hole. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Kind of on track, but we need to.
Just gonna find a few more projects.
I don't think that'd be hard.
No.
No.
I agree. Awesome.
Good.
Thanks Heidi.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you Heidi. We know where we need to be. We know where we need to go.
Alright. Well. I guess we will recess again till nine thirty. Don't let kids here. Jeff.
Good morning.
Morning. I'm not a boy. Sure, yeah.
You're important, guys.
So I'll jump through this. Probably take like ten or fifteen minutes. Uh just the LED lighting proposal uh when it came, came out a couple of weeks ago. Um I went through a few of your guys' facilities. So this would be the comprehensive LED lighting upgrade for all the interior and exterior lighting throughout uh five facilities. Looked at the public health building and then uh the shopping kins in fertile Joyce and Manly. Goal be eliminate all the ballast, upgrade all your fixtures, give you consistent light colors, increase light levels. Top right is the project summary. So the total project cost is uh soup to nuts, everything's included. So that would be documentation with Alliant, materials shipped um and ordered, um installation through a local electrician, installation, and then obviously disposal of everything. So that comes in at about forty-six, uh forty-seven thousand dollars. The incentive portion of that would be sent from Alliant to ROI Energy, which comes in at about eleven thousand dollars. Um meaning that the customer cost or the cost that you guys be responsible for is just about thirty-six thousand. So Alliant would fund roughly twenty-five percent of the project upfront. The other, obviously incentives upfront are nice. The other portion of this is the annual savings, which come in about just under four thousand dollars a year, meaning that you have about a nine-year payback. Um and then the fact that the lights have a fifty thousand hour lifetime expectancy. Um and with your annual savings that are four thousand dollars a year, you'd have a lifetime cash return of about thirty-two thousand dollars on the project. Any questions on those numbers? Page three, this is a table of contents. We won't go through all, all the numbers on this page. Really just there to give you an idea about the scope of the project and provide some clarity there. Um you know, if you look at just that top number, so you look at the one by four, you just have one one by four panel. And then it's got the annual savings, sale price, incentive, customer costs, and payback for all the individual fixtures. So you can kind of see the, the difference there. Uh but this is a one-for-one replacement, so we'll run through um the two main categories, which are the interior fixtures and the exterior fixtures. Uh on page four, you have the, this is all in the public health building. So all of the lights in the public health building are the surface fixtures. Uh they're two by four panel, kind of, you know, they're typically recessed troffers. There we would just remove that fixture in its entirety and put up a brand-new LED panel. Um it's gonna look a lot, it's gonna be a lot more aesthetically pleasing. The light's a lot better through those panels. Those panels are wattage selectable and color selectable. It's not something that you change on a daily basis, but it's something that we can change. Uh the other portion of that is um I walked around and I noticed you do have some broken lenses. And I know when I spoke with the, the, the head lady over there, she said they have ordered two separate lenses already and they keep falling out. So um that would eliminate worrying about any broken lenses and having to replace those and things of that nature. So again, just removing those surface fixtures and putting up brand-new two-by-four panels. Uh page five is gonna be the same, but it's just gonna be with your two-by-twos, which are mainly in your hallways. And then a one-by-four fixture, which is in the kitchen of the EOC portion of the building. So again, just removing what you currently have there and putting up a, a, a flat panel. And they're gonna, not gonna protrude from the ceiling quite as much either. Obviously, they're a little bit thinner than that. One thing I'll touch on, I, unless, everything today will have the fifty thousand hour lifetime expectancy and a five-year warranty. Typically for the first twelve to eighteen months, we'll handle everything. So if you have a light go out, we'll handle the warranty paperwork. We'll ship you a light. We'll pay the electrician to put it in. After that twelve to eighteen month period, we would ship you the light and then we'd ask that you guys cover the labor. The only thing that does not is the downlight fixtures, and I will point those out when we get to. Uh yeah, wrap fixtures, these are also all in the public health buildings. They're just replacing what you have above us. Removing that fixture and putting up a brand-new uh surface wrap fixture, a little bit more aesthetically pleasing, bring you into the, you know, a new fixture and it just looks a little bit nicer. So that's gonna be again, all in the health building, removing those and putting up uh new wrap fixtures. Page seven, we're gonna get to the shops. So basically in the shops right now, you have two lamp, uh either T twelve or T eight fixtures. Um so just removing those and putting up a similar fixture, but again, it's gonna be a new LED fixture, which is wattage selectable, color selectable. Um has a fifty thousand hour lifetime expectancy and five-year warranty. It's gonna increase the lighting in those areas and obviously reduce the uh the energy. So just removing those and putting up a strip. AJ, so this is the downlight fixture. These have a thirty thousand hour lifetime expectancy and a five-year warranty, but we would just take out your current cans, which looks like they have BR bulbs in them, and put in an LED uh downlight fixture. Getting rid of the ballast if there is one and, and um just put up that can fixture, which doesn't really have a divot in it, just kind of a flat across, you know, it's a little bit nicer. Page nine, we have one of these, just removing that vanity fixture off the bathroom. That's got two screw-ins in it and putting in an LED two-foot. Uh you know, a little bit nicer looking fixture in there as well. Get to the exterior, and this is where some of the stuff, obviously this isn't all or nothing. So um seeing some exterior lights, I was in Joyce. I think these are all in Joyce, if I remember correctly. Included those. So on that first one, you have a wall pack. That is on, uh like I said, the front of the building and you kind of have that old-style screw-in. There's not gonna be a payback on this. Actually, it would be increasing the wattage, but it would be increasing that lighting for security and stuff if, if it's needed there. Page eleven, had a few barn-style fixtures outside a couple of the shops, just replacing those, because currently the barn-style fixtures have a four hundred watt metal highlight bulb in those. Uh we dropped to about a hundred watts. So those are really uh kind of big energy savings if they're on every night. Page thirteen, it is an exterior fixture, but it's uh, most of these are in it's not the fertile shop.
Breakdown by building.
They're in one of the shops and they, they're on the side. My guess is when they're working on trucks and stuff to be able to see underneath of them. So you have, I think, six or seven of them in there. Uh they're currently the old-style flood fixture. So just replacing those with a new style flood fixture. Any questions on any of those? Then we get into the uh by building breakdown. Again, I won't go through all that in detail, but you can kind of see those, uh the numbers that you wanna see per building, total costs, incentives, annual savings, things of that nature. And then, before we jump into next steps, on the back, I did throw in some case studies. So we have Heide County, uh Plymouth County, Montgomery County, Harrison County, and Page County. You have other counties if you guys would like to see more of those, but those are all done and, and uh if you guys wanna reach out to anyone. Those are kind of some similar projects that we've obviously done. Uh next steps, so you guys decide if and when you wanna do a project. Select the scope of the project, the size of the project. If you do move forward, we'll do some paperwork with Alliant. We'll have you sign an installation agreement. Basically just locks in the pricing of the project and, and says that we have ninety days to complete it. Um so, once the installation agreement's signed, we'll order the materials, ship them. Uh we'll work with local electricians to get bids, unless you have somebody you'd like us to work with, then we can work with them. Um once the materials are on site and we have an electrician contracted, they would install everything. We would manage the installation, make sure they have everything they need. Um once they're done, they dispose of everything. And then at that point, we would send some paperwork to Alliant and then we would send you guys an invoice. But there's no payment due until the project's completes, no progress, no upfront, no partial payment. Just all due at the end and it's only for the net cost.
I definitely know you'll save money by putting all these lights in.
Right.
And I will say, some of the, there were some areas in the shops, you know, where you're at the public health, where it is, there are some tubes.
Yep.
Um we find the fixtures to be more reliable over, you know, we did Coralville a year and a half ago and, you know, we're sending them a hundred and eighty tubes. Uh we did Waterloo warehousing a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar project three years ago where we didn't use any tubes. I haven't heard from them. So we find the actual LED fixtures themselves to be more. And I mean, I could get your contact information to, to, you know, from Waterloo Warehousing to confirm that if you guys want it, but the tubes, they just seem to be less reliable for some situations. You do get the annual savings and you do get the increased lighting and all that great stuff, but for some reason, they just don't seem to be quite as reliable as coming in with like new panels.
Right. And they just not need or, can't hear their parents.
Yeah, they like say, even with the wrap fixtures, it just looks, you know, like it, it, it changes the aesthetic of.
Yep.
People will notice it and they typically don't notice your lights.
Right. Okay. Just something we can use to funds for.
To get it into the plan.
Gets it in plan.
Yeah, as a part, as part of the billing upgrade.
Improvement.
Anyone else do?
I'll also send a digital copy to all VDI's. Um and just to recap of the project summary, kind of, uh that first couple of minutes of the proposal, so you guys don't have to.
Yep.
Kind of leave this as an excerpt for anyone else.
Yes. Thank you. Will you pause this around?
Okay.
I'll follow up with that probably tomorrow and then maybe follow up in a week or two, just see how things are going. Awesome. Thank you guys. Have a good day.
Thank you.
So you know what? My house alone, I got two to three times the amount of fixtures and my light bill's easily half, if not that sixty percent less. Because it's all LED lighting compared to the old house. So.
The only thing I wondered is that public health, didn't they put LED in?
They put some LED bulbs in, like you said, but they're not as, you know, longevity. They're probably efficiency-wise, you're okay, but I don't know if they did all LEDs or not.
I would think efficiency-wise, they're the same thing. It's just, he's gonna fit in a whole new fixture, a whole nine yards. So maybe narrower.
So I know some of these I've got, I've seen one of them that looks similar to ones I put in my garage and it's, it's uh lighting-wise is just way superior to what you already have.
Do you know what is done over the public health, LED?
I just know they did bulbs. That's all. I don't think they really changed any fixtures. So I don't know if they'll still then, if they eliminate the ballast.
They eliminate the ballast.
The reason it's done that way is it's a slow transition, because that's a real thing in our office. We're looking at doing that at the shelter house at Cubans as well, just as, as we have to replace ballasts, just.
Something goes bad, just upgraded that.
Just to put a dent in the whole block. Well. Like I said, for, for us, it's not, not that big a deal.
No.
Because of how, the frequency of what you change the ballast anyways, it's not that big a deal, but.
No, but it's one of those, one of those things to do.
Right. Track them down. Some of those ballasts are getting kind of hard to find too. As time goes on, you gotta.
Right.
Stash them, because they'll eventually disappear, I'm sure. So. Anyway.
Definitely have money somewhere, but I'll look and see where we're at with urban renewal.
Next week and look if we're taking some action on it. I, I think it'd be, at least for like public health there, probably just, we're not eliminating any of the old shops, are we?
Not at the moment.
And, you know, with the, not that that was the cause of the accident, better lighting is definitely an issue. I mean, we're working on stuff.
They are, even with lights on, they're pretty dark inside.
Well, and I'm, it's true, it's like my farm shop is, between all the decent smoke.
Yeah, the.
They're not very bright anymore.
More bulbs.
Mark and Bugs and.
Mark says in the chat that he believes the lights over there, still have the ballast in them, but they have the LED bulbs.
I thought.
Just get rid of those ballasts. That building ain't going anywhere.
No, that's, that's gonna stay.
You got buildings with lights on eight hours a day.
And I don't foresee going to real centralized shopping. And you do, so if we would, we'd be doing it right now.
Well, I think you can. If there's anything we're centralizing, it'd be on the, on the west side.
Yeah. So. And that's, you know, so, okay. Yeah, so, and that's, you know, so, okay, all right, nothing else on the agenda, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Yeah, I'll just second it, no further discussion, all the payers say aye.
Aye.
Motion, the meeting is adjourned.